I agree with you.
Okay, we'll reconvene the city council. We had a closed session. Two items. The first, or one of the items was a Vietnamese temple. There was no action taken. And the second was the Kha litigation. And the city council authorized the filing of a petition for review with the California Supreme Court. The vote was four to one with council member Rosen voting no. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Assistant City Manager Les Jones and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Broadwater.
Dear Lord, as the city council convenes this evening to consider issues of importance to our community, give them guidance so that their decisions reflect wisdom and compassion. Let mutual regard and the principles of sound government prevail. Amen.
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, see, we have a presentation.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
I wonder if the recipients even hear.
It's hard to miss her. Uh, yeah, like Assistant City Manager Les Jones to make this very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pride in celebrating and recognizing a cherished member of the city family who is retiring after 27 years of outstanding civil service to the city of Garden Grove. Would Ruth Smith please come forward? In the words of William Arthur Ward, a famous author and educator, greatness is not found in possessions, power, position, or prestige. It is discovered in goodness, humility, service, and character. Ruth's work is undoubtedly a testament to her greatness. From the moment she was hired as a department secretary for the city's Administrative Services Department in 1981, it became evident that she was not afraid of a challenge. Within five months, she was promoted to serve as deputy city clerk for the next 16 years and then ascended to city clerk during the remainder of her career. For nearly 27 years, Ruth has zealously worked for the city, going above and beyond the call of duty. Her work has been vital to day-to-day operations of the city. And in her tenure, she has provided invaluable assistance to six mayors, 19 city council members, and countless Garden Grove residents. Her work transcends the boundaries of her department to the entire city. She has given so much to so many in the city family. Under the auspices of quality assurance, Ruth elevates the work of employees around her. Ruth's vibrant personality is an inspiration to many and makes her a joy to work to and from, or and with. Ruth has been a cornerstone, not only in her own department, but in her community. The roots of Ruth's service to others came in the form of PTA at Sunnyside Elementary in Garden Grove. After serving as president for two terms, Ruth was bestowed the PTA Honorary Service Award. This would be just the beginning of such distinguished accolades. What Amelia Earhart accomplished for women aviators, Ruth accomplished for women in traditional community roles by becoming the first female member and later president of the Garden Grove Host Lions Club. Ruth has proudly served as a board member and president of Acacia Adult Day Services, member of the women's division of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, Garden Grove Elks Lodge, Garden Grove Sister City Association, and Serapimus International of Garden Grove. Her work in that community has been appreciated and rewarded with honors that include being named 1999 Woman of the Year by the California State Assembly, the 2004 Woman of the Year by the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, and the 2006 Cypress College Americana Citizen of the Year. Ruth spans the globe as an avid world traveler. She is a talented musician and has shared her gift for the harp on numerous occasions with mesmerized audiences throughout the community. Not only is Ruth a respected member of our city family, she is a true asset to our community. The influence and success of her career's work throughout the city are immeasurable. Ruth, at this time, the mayor and city council would like to present you with a resolution of commendation. The city of Garden Grove wishes you the best as you begin the next chapter of your adventurous life in retirement, and I personally want to thank you very much. Congratulations.
I'm not going to read all the where-asses because actually, most of them were pretty much covered by Les Jones. But I kind of liked this last part. After 27 years of excellence for the city of Garden Grove, on December 12th, 2007, family, friends, city family, and professional colleagues will wish Garden Grove's beloved city clerk, humanitarian, world traveler, fashion diva, and lifelong friend the best retirement has to offer. Now therefore being resolved that the city of Garden Grove does hereby recognize and commend Ruth Smith on the occasion of her retirement, extend deepest appreciation for her venerated contributions to the city and its residents and wish her countless fulfillments in her future years ahead. Thanks for everything. I've known you those 27 years. And Kathy, you have some big shoes to fill. But we all know her home phone number. And we know where you live. My bless you. Oh, wait a minute. Thank you. Well, we're gonna get your picture first. What, are you neutered? You neutered this?
This is surreal. It's a very emotional thing for me to leave the city. Um, I wrote a few things down. First of all, I want to tell you why my husband, Lee, isn't here. It's because he has Italian class tonight. And he's in charge of transporting the teacher to the class, so he had to do that. So he wanted me to be sure to tell you why he wasn't here. Um, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Nat, Les, and city staff for being an important part of my very rewarding years here at the city. I leave with a sense of excitement but also with a tinge of sadness. The residents of this city are precious, and the people at City Hall are the very best. But retiring will provide me with an opportunity to make some friends in Long Beach, which I haven't been able to do as yet. I've been there a year and a half. I don't have any friends. So it's time to learn about my new surroundings and spend some more time with my husband, my children, and my grandchildren. I'm certain that Garden Grove will continue to flourish under the great leadership that we have. And you'll still be seeing me around. Thank you.
Okay, next is oral communications for the council, agency, industrial authority, and the sanitary district. Riza, she has a ear.
Good evening, Mayor and Member of City Council. I'm here to talk a subject.
Could you, I think the microphone, yeah. It's a little off to the side there.
Uh, this subject for me is very interesting, but since you haven't done it, so I can watch what you want to do. But I have something to tell you. Uh, this is about the 7K issue. Since beginning few months ago, something happened. I was here and I talked about it and was very happy that I realized that, especially one member of city council and yourself, you become very interested to find out what happened. But unfortunately, today, I'm here to tell you is the same thing happened. Uh, I don't know if I can deliver this one to them. In this letter that you see that I know directly came from Sandra, which is in charge of that contract, and of course, is the official letter of the city, I want to point out to you on those highlighted letter that it says that on April 3rd, there was inspection. And during that inspection, the violation, so it means there was one violation regarding the, an office spot or not. And again, they mentioned city would like to give American tow to remedy the violation. Again, in English plain language, they just one that was noted during that inspection. And now mentioned clearly that violation, what was the minimum total capacity? And on the bottom, it said you will be notified on date and time of the tow inspection. Interesting is that none of them happened. They came there, first of all, they came unannounced, which my least concern because I believe that everybody should be ready. So that I'm not worried about. But based on this letter that said one violation, the police gentleman came there and they start talking about hazardous material, how we handle hazardous material, how we handle those complaint, who has the remote control to go, a gate opener. And it was very interesting that, I don't know why they went through that one. It was, seems to me that they came there with one intention, to find something to say no. And unfortunately, it became that day. And I tried to ask them that, okay, what happened? They kind of refused to tell me what happened, which I am again interested to see. What was the secrecy that if everything was by the book, why they didn't tell me that day that, okay, you didn't pass with this? If tonight, you go with, make a decision, again, I examined the staff report that you have it now. There is nothing on that one about what kind of inspection police officer did, why they deny it, and no information. Again, if you do this one, it seems that you wasted your time of two, three months. You could do this one three months ago. Last time, as I said, when they were here, it was very interesting that I saw you are very interested to find the justice and fairness, and I hope tonight you are the same thing. Because when I look at the new list, on the contract, it said this contract will awarded based on the current situation and all different criteria, nothing to do with the past experience. But very interesting is that four company, they were doing this for the past god knows how many years. It's still they are the same company. Last time, Colvert-Town wasn't there, so I don't know what happened, why we are not there, and Colvert is there. Again, we don't know what was the criteria that they passed, what was the criteria that American tow was denied. One thing very important is that one that I want to mention that AB 1234, that I'm sure you passed that one, was ethic training conflict of interest. You passed it, and I know I passed it myself because of my position. And that's become now, as far as we are concerned, the whole issue shifted from being the inadequate procedure or human misjudgment to seriously discrimination because that's only conclusion I came up, or favoritism to some company. And I go beyond that, said conspiracy, to deny American Auto Center from the contract. They have the right to get it, and they're the best company in the area. And I was wondering what happened, which is still, we don't have any information. If you have any question, I have some document, but otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you. Frank Hoffman.
Good evening. About a month ago, a month and a half or so ago, I came for the council and I described a few things. And then I had a commitment, so I left early. And apparently, one of the members of the council, when I wasn't there, stated some number that I was claiming for just moving, I believe. If that's true, Mr. Rosen, some $300,000 number just for moving, I think, was the figure that was quoted to me. Well, that's false. And the only real way that you can answer stuff like that is with the truth. The plain and simple fact of the matter is that for all four of my involuntary claims, they come to about two-thirds of that figure. I think, you know, when people are gonna go out and throw around numbers for a few political points, I think the only thing I can really do is to start to talk maybe some truths. Here's a truth, for example, that I'm not sure people are aware of. Do people know, for example, that the salary and compensation of the city manager, Mr. Fertal, is about on a par with the President of the United States? Now, I've talked to Mr. Fertal. He seems fairly competent in his little area of expertise. But with all due respect, he's not the same caliber as the leader of the free world.
You know, if you want to talk, you can talk. But I, I'm really not gonna sit here and listen to character assassination and all that. You know, there are executives that work every place in this state and every other state that make a heck of a lot more money than a President of the United States. If you want to talk about you're unhappy that something was said, or you want to rectify by changing whatever you want to say, but attacking people, I'm just not gonna tolerate.
I'm not attacking anybody.
Well, that's how I see it.
And if you want to, you know, limit to public comment and what the city is spending on anything.
I'm limiting, I'm limiting you in what you can say about people, yes.
Well, uh, one of the arguments, I'll talk in general then. One of the arguments they, they say is that, well, you know, these amounts are called for because that's what they get in the private sector. Well, one, I didn't agree with a lot of what Ronald Reagan said, but he did say one true thing. He said, "The private sector isn't waiting in line to hire people out of the government. It's a different skill set. It's apples and oranges." And, you know, it's like being in the army, for example. You know, it only really trains you to be in the army. If you're in a bureaucracy, it really only trains you to be in the bureaucracy. Can't be compared. The other argument that I hear quite often is you gotta pay them, because you know, you gotta pay, you get the best people, as if that was the basis for ever belonging to an appointed government. Really, the essential prerequisite for being an appointed government is the willingness to march to the taxes, taxes, uberalis bureaucrat anthem. That's what it is. Am I wrong? Do these folks not go to conventions and conferences and network with people all over the country where if somebody comes up with a scheme to extract some taxes out of people, that, that news spreads like wildfire and from Maine to Hawaii and Alaska to Florida, people are trying it all over the country in record time? You know, what's the result of this? The result of this is that people in appointed government, like this city, as an average, are making a whole lot more than the people that they govern. If, if somebody had the vision to tie the average salary in a bureaucracy to the, the people that they govern, the citizens that they govern, well, that would truly be visionary and would really do a good thing. Because the way it is right now, Thomas Jefferson would really raise a red flag. Now, I know these are some difficult truths that aren't really put out there and people don't like to hear them. But it's all true, you know. If you don't want to hear the truth, you know, the only thing I can say is, I'll make a deal with you, you know? If you stop lying about me, I'll stop telling the truth about you. What do you say?
You said, I, you quoted me as saying 300,000, and you're saying the, the true number is two-thirds of that?
True number for all four claims.
Is 200,000?
Yes.
Okay. That's still outrageous.
Thank you. Russ McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. That's a hard act to follow. I was gonna talk about fireworks tonight, but in light of the gentleman that just came up here, I think I'll just go ahead and wish you all Merry Christmas and a, and a Happy New Year and everything. And, and I ain't forgot about fireworks. We'll, we'll talk about it next year. But have a, have a happy holiday, y'all.
Merry Christmas to you guys. Merry Christmas to you too. David Ville.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Our chapter ARP is a volunteer charity that has sympathy and compassion for those less fortunate, the weak, the meek, the elderly, the poor, and the needy. We make the effort to make life a little more pleasant for them so that they may age with dignity by providing a forum so that they may have a voice in their, in the future. Okay, now, with that said, I, I do wish to, I do wish everyone listening, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, peace on earth, goodwill to men, you know? And I, uh, next, next Tuesday, we will have the Garden Grove Choir coming to sing to our chapter members right over here in this next room at 12:30 next Tuesday. So those of you that want to come and listen to some happy singers, please come. At our last general meeting, November the 20th, right there in that same room, just before Thanksgiving, we handed a check for $927 to the Matua family that had fled, that had to flee their burning home because of 4th of July fireworks. That day, he said to our chapter members with tears in his eyes that he was thankful to ARP because we were the only ones that offered help. With that said, my, uh, my members have asked me to, you, Dina Nguyen and Bruce Broadwater, to thank you for even considering bringing this up to a vote, for, and giving the people in the cities of Garden Grove a chance with to vote on this issue. Personally, I, I feel that they should be banned, period, you know? With the majority of cities, the police, the fire, a house burning down every fourth, what does it take for you to realize that fires burn and injure? How, how do you justify keeping them if one match can burn the town down? And you need matches to light fireworks, how do you justify uncontrolled fireworks? Again, I, I brought this up once before. This is a book of matches. One match can set this whole town on fire. The thing is this, but they're controlled because I have them in my pocket, and unless I take them out of my pocket, then they're, they're controlled. But when, when you sell fireworks, you have thousands of fires, and people have to have the matches to light the fireworks. So there really is no safe and sane fireworks when you get right down to it. So, so, so this is the, the point that I want to make. The other point that I want to make is these war zones, you know? Like I said before, I don't live in a war zone. You don't, and matter of fact, I know that you people up there don't live in these war zones. Yet you have to understand that these people that live in these places, you know, that are considered war zone, they, they suffer from these, from these fireworks. Personally, it's not gonna change my lifestyle if you never do anything about, about the fireworks. And I know it's not gonna change with your lifestyle because you don't live in these certain areas. When I was a scout, we were taught to keep, to respect our elders and to prevent fires. Boy Scouts should not be promoting fireworks. This is one of the things that bothered me when the, when the adults use young children to come over here and promote fireworks, and this is not the Boy Scouts that I knew. It is ironic that the three of you that voted not to give the people a chance with to vote on this, that your three seats are gonna be up for election, and the voters will get a chance to vote. So, so they, they can vote then. And I do, I, I do want to say that our chapter, again, will be sponsoring forums for, for this, for the city councils and for the mayor and also the supervisor's race that will be coming up shortly. So we will, and the reason we do this is we want to invite people in the city to get a chance to see who, who, who they are gonna elect and find out if they really will do meet their, their goals, okay? I want to thank you, and again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Peggy Bergen.
My name is Peggy Bergen, and I'll be rolling onto 30-year resident next spring. Basically, I have a couple of items, and one of them is I want to thank responses I got from a couple of my questions last, at the last meeting. I've heard a couple of times from city people about the lighting issue on our street, which basically, it's still, the lights are still out. So our safe medians, even with the two times we've had rain, it's, it's very dark there at night, and especially the last couple nights when there's been no moon. Uh, I've almost bumped into the curbs myself, and I know it's a, a solid median now. But they have been in contact with Southern California Edison, which I guess is the main cause of the problem. They can't send someone out to flip a switch or whatever. But also, I was at the tree lighting ceremony last week, and I want to compliment everybody involved. It was wonderful, cheerful. I mean, I wish it was as brisk last week as it was tonight. We would have really felt we were almost gonna get the snow. But there was enough entertainment, not too much. It started on time. It was very efficient, and it was the first eggnog I had of the season, so thank you, city. Oh, now, on the, a couple of different things on our agendas tonight. One of them is the city council on the 10B for amber lighting on Garden Grove Boulevard, a couple of places throughout the city. I just really do not feel that some of that is really the best spending of $2.5 million at this time. Because I, I do know it serves purposes, but if you don't live in that neighborhood, you won't see it. There's a lot of places in the city that we could use our monies to help all the citizens. And the other thing is going to be on the public hearing tonight, that's a 4A. And I just basically have a question. I don't even, I'm not for or against whatever the thing is. I'm just kind of questioning what the, it's the community development one, 4A. What conveyance of properties mean? Does that mean something we already own and we're giving to somebody or conveyance of property and it will be a money involved coming back to the redevelopment of the city? So that's my only question on that one. And happy holidays to everyone, and I really should say Merry Christmas, but I want to be politically correct. And have a good holiday, and I already figured out without seeing the bottom line, you probably wouldn't be here in two weeks. Because I won't be here for sure anyways, because it's Christmas night. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas. Okay, I'll close oral communications. Okay, I'll close oral communications. Next item is reorganization of city council. 5A, selection of mayor pro temp.
Mr. Rosen, do you want to still be the mayor pro temp?
Well, I'll do it for another, one more year.
No, I hate seeing you make all the extra money over this, you know?
I didn't know there was any.
He could not buy a cup of coffee with it. I'll move that we make Mr. Rosen the continuing mayor pro temp.
Okay, motion and second. Call for a vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'll recess the city council and we'll go to the agency.
Oh, I wasn't ready for that.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, go ahead. Now that you're mayor pro temp.
I wasn't aware I'd get any, I don't think I'd get any extra money for being mayor pro temp. The council members make $500 to $600 a month, so we make less than minimum wage, but I have to say about Matt Fratell, that one of the speakers complained about him getting paid more than the president, which I don't think is correct, but the fact is, Matt Fratell had a better year this year than the president did.
Okay, at this time, we'll call the regular meeting, the agency meeting together. Kathy, would you show all present, please? And the first thing we're going to do is select the chair and the vice chair.
Mr. Chair, do you still desire to remain the chair?
Only if I get the extra money. Yes, I do.
I'd like to nominate you then.
Thank you.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we need to select a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Nguyen as vice chair.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Consent items, we have one consent item. Entertainer motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote. Okay, let's go to public hearings.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Chair, 4A is a public hearing to convey property, also known as to sell property to Medallion Health Properties LLC and it's the property on Springdale and Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Chairman Broadwater, agency members, good evening. It's requested that the Agency for Community Development consider the sale of the real property located at 12461 Springdale Street. Property consists of 30,111 square feet. It's currently improved with a 2,640 square foot commercial building which has been vacant for some time. On September 25th of 2007, the Agency directed staff in closed session to proceed with a purchase and sale agreement with Medallion Health Properties LLC. This direction occurred after a prolonged period of marketing the site for redevelopment. Medallion has offered to purchase the property for $1.1 million, which represents the highest out of a total of four offers received and presented to the agency. Medallion is proposing to operate a 15-bed medical rehabilitation facility specifically for spinal cord injuries and other catastrophic medical issues and construct a new building to accommodate such a use. Preliminary site plan is located on the wall behind you. A general plan amendment and CUP will be required for the facility as the current zoning for the property is R16, that's residential, R1, which currently would allow for low-density single-family residential. Medallion operates a similar facility in North Tustin. The proposed project and preliminary site plan were presented to the Economic Development and Improvement Committee, otherwise known as EDIC, which consists of city employees and department directors, last Thursday. EDIC indicated support for the proposed use. The purchase agreement calls for escrow to close when proper approvals and permits have been obtained from the city and the purchase and sale agreement contemplates an outside closing date of June 1st of 2008. It could conceivably happen sooner than that. Gross revenue from the sale will be $1.1 million. Cost of the sale to the agency will be limited to those obligations as outlined in the agreement and essentially that we've agreed, both parties have agreed to split the escrow fees and costs as is customary in the state of California. As far as how this project would line up with our community vision implementation plan, it would improve the city's economic base through the development of either tax generating uses where appropriate. We recommend, staff, that you take the following actions. Approve the attached agency resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of 12461 Springdale Street to Medallion Health Properties LLC for $1.1 million. Authorize the director and secretary to execute the purchase and sale agreement when appropriate to do so. And we are available, as always, to answer any questions that you may have. I believe there may be a representative from Medallion in the audience, I hope that's correct.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Does anybody like to speak on this issue? This is the old Boys and Girls Club at the corner of Slampson and Springdale, it's on the, actually, it's on the northwest corner and it's been vacant about four or five years. It'll be good to get it back on the tax rolls if this passes tonight. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Where's your lower approval? We have a motion to approve and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, you have the 2006-2007 Agency Annual Report and Chet Yoshizaki is here to give you a brief presentation of this item.
Chair Broadwater, members of the Redevelopment Agency, it is a pleasure to bring forth the annual report as the Director Fratell has indicated. This is in accordance with the community redevelopment law as each year we are to submit a manual report which includes a number of state mandated reports. I know the report that I transmitted to you is quite voluminous, but it's, the first section covers the highlights that cover the activities and decisions made by this agency over the last fiscal year. Sections 2 through 9 are the state mandated reports, which include an audit, an independent audit of the agency financials as well as housing and other redevelopment-related reports mandated by the state. In the staff report, I've highlighted for you the number of accomplishments that the agency has made over the last fiscal year. And again, I'm pleased to report that even though market conditions changed on us mid-year and we had to hold back on some of the developments that we had planned, we still, by the end of June 07, will reflect a private investment of over $250 million in new property value. By the virtue of the agency assisting local businesses that have been impacted by redevelopment projects, we will retain approximately $200,000 annually in retail sales tax and so overall it was a very good and productive year. Again, if I were to highlight all of the projects, it would probably take me an hour or more, so what I've decided to do this evening is to show you in graphic form a pictorial of the types of projects we've been able to accomplish this year and the fine productive year that we've had, so if we can just take about a few minutes to review the video.
Places to work, places to live, and planning ahead for the future. It's been another busy year for the city's Agency for Community Development. Garden Grove continues to add to its skyline and its housing stock with very successful results. First, let's take a look at the continued development of International West, the city's resort area along Harbor Boulevard. This brand-new 288-room Sheraton Hotel represents a $35 million investment that will bring 250 new jobs and an estimated $1 million in revenue to the city. The Embassy Suites Hotel chain is planning a major expansion, the addition of an 18-story tower just behind the original on Harbor Boulevard. In more International West news, the McQuinney Corporation submitted an RFP for the 35-acre Central Hub Site. One possible project is a hotel and waterpark development.
The Central Hub Site represents kind of the beginning of the next phase of that development that's going to take redevelopment further south on Harbor Boulevard, that's going to have a chance to put more hotels and put more amenities in for Garden Grove.
The project represents Phase 2 of the International West Resort Development. Revenue from a project like this can help fund city services without raising taxes. This strategy is validated by a report on the city's development plan written by economist John Husey. He writes Garden Grove should continue its successful policy of working with the hotel industry to move more tourist activity to its Harbor Boulevard corridor. Bringing these projects to the city takes a lot of work. This year, the agency renewed an agreement with Urghul Worldwide, a branding and advertising agency to handle International West. A recently completed feasibility study lays out the facts on the resort project for developers and investors at the International Association of amusement parks and attractions. City leaders attended the recent IAPA convention in Orlando, Florida. This just in, the agency signed an agreement with the Platinum Television Group for production of this video on International West. The show can be seen on regional news networks in up to 25 markets and had a one-shot national telecast on the Travel Channel. The growth of Garden Grove's housing stock continues to impress. The Chapman Commons Project is almost complete and Garden Grove Homes LLC is hammering away at its projects on Chapman Avenue and Mary Lee Drive. Developments on the way include a new condo complex on Main Street. Mayor Bill Dalton continues his business outreach efforts with recognition of outstanding companies, quarterly business breakfast, and business visits. Economic Development Department staff are also finding out what local firms need by conducting surveys. Small, medium, and large businesses are the foundation of any successful city. The Economic Development Department proudly joined the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce earlier this year. The agency also reached out to mobile home park residents. Improvement grants and exterior improvement funds were issued to Garden Grove senior citizens at the parks. Agency staff laid the groundwork for future developments by keeping an eye on available land. The agency purchased several properties in the Civic Center area and the old Hyundai site on Garden Grove Boulevard. These properties are critical to future projects. Finally, here is an update on a project we reported on last year. The Los Sanchez Mexican Restaurant was relocated from Harbor Boulevard to make way for the Sheridan Hotel. Owner Victor Gomez rented this site for his popular business and with agency help rebuilt at this new site on Garden Grove Boulevard. He owns the property this time and business is so good, he's using land adjacent to his for parking overflow. Ole Victor.
So as you can see, we've had a very active and productive year and we're looking forward to continuing that direction under the guidance of the agency board. Some of these projects, the larger ones, are challenging, they will take more time, but it reflects an investment in this community upon the staff marketing and actively pursuing potential developments that will continue to enhance the economic viability of this community. So with that, I'm pleased to submit the report for your approval and transmit it to the city council and the city council will then take a separate action under their own agenda to approve and transmit the report to the state. So that completes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to matters from the agency members. Anybody have any comments, want to make anything to say, have anything to say? At that time, and then we'll adjourn our meeting until January 8th.
Mr. Chairman, if we could at least ask for an answer or an action to accept and transmit the report.
It's not on there, you're not asking for that on the agenda, so.
All right. At this time, can I ask the agency to?
We have a motion and we have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
I was going to comment, I think I'll comment when we get to the council agenda when we talk about our recent trip to IAPA.
Okay, we'll reconvene the Garden Grove Sanitary District meeting. The item is reorganization of the sanitary district, selection of president and vice president.
Well, I'd like to nominate you, Mr. Mayor, to continue as president.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. And for vice president, I nominate Mayor Pro Tem Rosen.
Well, that's been our tradition, I'd like to do something a little different.
Uh-oh.
I'd like to nominate Member Jones to be the vice president. The vice president is automatically the alternate on the Orange County Sanitation District Board.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, consent items.
Mr. President, you have the minutes from the regular meeting of November 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. I think somebody sabotaged this.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, there are no public hearings. Items for consideration.
Mr. President, you have a word of a contract for sewer improvements on Garden Grove Boulevard and I'd like Keith Jones to make a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. President, members of the board, and moving forward with eradicating our capacity deficiencies in our sewer system, you have before you tonight for a ward of construction as identified in our capacity assurance plan of 2005, Projects 7, 9, and 61. These are known as the four projects consisting of constructing a replacement of sewer lines in Garden Grove Boulevard, in Palm Street, Aspenwood Lane, and Volkwood Street. This also includes the construction of 34 new manholes and modification of five existing manholes and some water line modifications. Nine qualified bids were received and opened in the city clerk's office on October 17th, 2006, and the lowest qualified bidder was Vassal, doing business as Avanco, with a total bid of $3,376,502. This bid is within current project budget and so is our recommendation that the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors award contract to Vassal Incorporated, doing business as Avanco, for $3,376,502 and authorize the general manager and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. Include staff reports, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we go ahead with the project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, any matters from board members? And it will stand adjourned, is it January 8th or?
Second meeting.
And it will reconvene the industrial development authority. Reorganization of the authority, selection of chair and vice chair. Okay, Dina, go ahead.
Am I the chair? Are we doing the selection right now? Okay. Do we have any nomination for the new?
Would you like to stay on it?
I don't want.
Okay, I'll nominate you for the chair.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
I'd like to nominate Steve Jones for the vice chair.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received, five yes votes. Motion received, five yes votes.
Oral communications, do we have any?
No.
Okay. We'll now recess the industrial development authority.
You got a couple of items.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Chair.
I have a recess before the consent item. All right, we have two consent items. First is the annual report for the industrial development authority. Do we have a presentation?
None if you don't request one.
Okay, and?
File.
Okay, thank you. And the minutes of the regular meeting for December's 12th.
I'll move approval.
Is that all of the consent items?
Yes.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Oh, 2006, okay, got it.
Okay. For the record, Member Jones is abstaining from 3B. No item for consideration. Any matters from the members? We call meeting for an adjournment.
Okay, we'll reconvene the city council meeting, and I believe next item is consent items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it's recommended that Items 7A through 7M be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
I'm going to get out of 7A. Yeah, I'd like to pull 7I, 7K. And I think that's.
Move to balance.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, 7I. The reason I called that is that is an item that we're looking to get about $30,000 from the county via Supervisor Janet Nguyen for the purchase and installation of some outdoor senior fitness equipment. Probably about nine months ago, I was at an event where I met some people that came up with some new innovative senior exercise equipment, and they were doing some shows and showing it to some of the local cities, and several cities have seen it and liked what they've seen. And so I had Kim Hoy go for a demonstration, and it looks like something that we could install outdoors around the senior center, and it's equipment that will definitely be used. Other cities, it's just like something new to the seniors, and they really are enjoying it. And it's good not only for health purposes, but it adds a little more traction to our senior center, and we're pretty proud of that. So we try and stay up on things, and hopefully we'll get. It should probably not cost us very much, or if it does, just a very small amount. The majority, the $30,000, would come from the Orange County Supervisors. So I'd like to go ahead and move that item. Second. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7K.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rosen.
With regard to 7K, in my law practice, I've represented one or more of the people who applied for the franchise, so I'm going to recuse myself from participation in this matter, and I'll leave the dais until it's concluded.
Okay, 7K is the item that deals with agreements with VND Towing, Action Southland Towing, Country City Towing, CRC Towing, and Caldwell's Towing to provide on-call rotational towing services for the police department. A gentleman spoke earlier representing American Tow, and he had mentioned that he had a letter that pointed out that the only deficiency during the first inspection of their property, as listed in this letter, was that there were not enough parking spaces. And I pulled this because I wanted to have someone from the police department respond to this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, there was an extensive RFP process that started in November of last year and concluded with the report you have before you. Lieutenant Todd Elgin from our department was our point of contact and really shepherded this process through, so I'd ask the lieutenant to address the issues of concern you mentioned.
With regard to the process, a specific question, sir? Why they weren't selected?
Well, the letter that was presented to us indicated that the only reason at that time was a shortage of parking. Now, is that? I mean, that's the interpretation if you look at the letter.
Right.
So if that were the case, and they had expanded the parking, why wouldn't they be on the list?
Because I think you've got to understand, this was a process. There were certain parts to the process. The first process being actually the response to the RFP, which is presenting a package. The second part of the process was the actual inspection. The major part of that inspection, at the initial inspection, they failed was not only the parking lot, the ability to park upwards to 75 vehicles in the parking lot, but there were some other issues that were noted on a sheet having to do with different citizen complaints, maybe some bookkeeping type of stuff, but the major issue being the parking because it had to do with actual structure, brick and mortar. After they received that letter, the next part of the process had to do with looking at the background, making sure that the application and the information on the application was correct. And part of that process, we started to look into the application and inquire, and we found a handful of issues in addition to the actual inspection that did not qualify them to actually make the list, the list that you have in front of you now. The first being references. In 2003, American Tow actually worked for the CHP under a gentleman by the name of Kenneth Franklin, the owner, and in 2006, they reapplied again, and they were actually let go at that time for poor service. In 2006, they reapplied again under the ownership of Hushang Esfahani, and the business was disqualified at that time due to lack of experience and the fact that this Kenneth Franklin still appeared to be the owner of the business. In addition to that, there still are some questions with regard to the ownership of the business. Mr. Esfahani states that he is the owner of the business. However, when we look at the Garden Grove Business Tax Application, a business license check, Orange County fictitious business name statements, California business licensing, everything seems to point back to this gentleman by the name of Kenneth Franklin. In addition to that, there's just a lack of towing experience. We contacted Golden Touch Tow, who Mr. Esfahani was employed by in 2005. According to Golden Touch Tow, they stated that Mr. Esfahani had nothing to do with the tow portion of the business, that he was simply the manager of the body shop. The RFP requirement, there's a requirement in the RFP that the owner of the business or the person at the business be in the tow business for three years. Mr. Esfahani was only the manager of the body shop, therefore he didn't have the experience of actually running a tow operation. In addition to that, American Tow has been investigated by the Garden Grove Police Department, the DMV, and also Westminster PD with regard to civil complaints, one being that Mr. Esfahani and American Tow were the focus of an investigation, were apparently the proper lean cell procedures, and the due diligence involved with finding the actual lien holder was not followed. And in addition to that, repairs were done to the vehicle without the owner's consent. Westminster Police Department is currently investigating a tow where a simple tow at an accident scene where apparently American Tow has grossly overcharged the citizen on a AAA tow. As far as the reinspection of the business goes, Mr. Mayor, we took a look at the actual parking lot because we went back out there after sending that letter out because we did give them time to remedy some of the issues. With regards to the tow, they actually did move the fence towards Stanford, capturing some of the employee parking as well as customer parking out front. When we went back to inspect it, granted, there are more parking spaces, however, the employees are still parking behind the fence, essentially what we needed to capture as part of the 75 vehicles. In addition to that, you still have your tow trucks parked on the property there, so there really is a question as to whether he can actually house 75 vehicles. In addition to that, the fencing itself, it was raised to six feet in order to match the six-foot limit. The problem is they lifted it four to six inches off the ground, so now there's an actual gap underneath the fence, and the RFP requires that there be no more than a two-inch gap underneath the fence. And then one big other issue that we're also looking at is the indoor storage. As required by the RFP, they're required to have secured indoor storage. The problem with that facility is that secured inside storage facility in there is also being used as a auto body repair or body shop. So those are some more issues that came up after we sent the letter out that we felt were not adequate, and that's why American Tow was disqualified.
Am I correct then in understanding that, say, had they had the proper number of parking spaces at the time, you would have continued farther into your investigation, but that was, at that point, you ceased it because they couldn't comply with that?
Initially, yes, but once we went back to reinspect, we expected the actual, the problem with the actual tow yard itself, we thought that it would probably be taken care of. Well, the next part of the process is actually looking at the application and actually doing the background on the application. And in doing that background and talking to other agencies, that's when all these other issues came up that kind of sent the red flags and kind of made us, made that decision that at this time.
So then if they had had the proper number of parking initially, you would have gone to the next phase and discovered whatever you discovered since going back.
Absolutely, 100%. I mean, that, like I said, that was just one phase of the process.
I see. Any other questions? No. Yes, Miss Nguyen.
So all the discovery came after October 8th letter, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is it a process when we discover these things that we put it in writing and send it back to them?
No, not necessarily. I mean, some of the stuff, I mean, I think we may send them a letter, kind of giving in general what the issues were, but actually specific, specific conversations, any kind of, you know, that type of stuff. I don't think we'd get into the specifics.
Okay, the representative came up this evening and talked about it because they got the October 8th letter. So so far, they, from the presentation that that person made, it doesn't appear like they knew about all the other items. So if we could, could we please send them like maybe some major points about why they were denied the bid, and then just as a courtesy?
Sure, and I'd like to point out that the city has not done an RFP for tow for probably close to 15 years. So that point is well taken, and we'll make sure that a document is sent to them.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just have more of a general question. How many total companies were reviewed as part of this RFP process?
19. Yeah, initially, we started out with 19 that actually submitted paperwork after the RFP meeting.
So we started out with four before all this started. We reviewed 19 companies. We came back with the same four and then added one. I mean, what was the purpose of going through all the motion if we kind of ended up back where we started, or what drove this? Why do we bring this about?
There was a request by two companies after the RFP process to be reconsidered. Two companies asked us to reconsider.
I think prior to that, we were approached by other companies wishing to be added to the rotation, and at that time, we didn't really have a formal process on how to add. So in response to that, we developed the RFP. And as it just turned out coincidentally, based on the rating and all the qualifications, that four of the existing tow companies were deemed qualified, and we added one more.
Mr. Broadbent.
I was the one that probably was dubious of the RFP. I just, and I apologize for that because if I cast any aspersions on the process, I found out by reviewing it and researching it, it was done well. And I think you guys need high marks for doing such a great job. And we're not going to put 19 companies on it. And it came out to five, and even five may be too many, but just the same, we'll leave it with five, I guess. But I think you did a great job. I think the police department for an RFP process, first time in 15 years, I think they did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
And I will make a motion to approve. Was it K?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Councilmember Rosen being absent.
Public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you have a correspondence from the applicant indicating that they intend to withdraw their appeal, so this matter will no longer be brought before the city council.
Commission and committee matters. The council and the city received a letter of resignation from Planning Commissioner Roland Chi, who is getting married and apparently moving out of the area. I make a motion that we accept Roland's resignation, and we wish him well.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is a request that the city council seek funding in conjunction with Orange County Supervisor Janet Nguyen's office for development of a dog park at Garden Grove Park, and Kim Hoy is, nope, I take that back, Kilar is here to give the brief.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The agenda item before you tonight is a request that the city council select a location for a dog park, and also to seek city council approval to send a letter of request to Supervisor Janet Nguyen's office requesting funding for this facility. City staff was recently informed by Supervisor Nguyen's office of the possibility of available funding to develop a dog park in the city of Garden Grove. At the October 23rd, 2007 study session, the city council directed staff to notify Supervisor Nguyen's office that the city was interested in pursuing the development of Dog Park and to return with information regarding a specific location and cost. When staff notified Supervisor Nguyen's office of the city's interest, Supervisor Nguyen requested that the city council identify a location for the park prior to her moving forward with an approval request to the Orange County Board of Supervisors. Potential sites for the development of a dog park were reviewed, and several issues were considered throughout this process, including proximity to other facilities such as restrooms and parking, proximity to residential neighborhoods, and noise levels. Based on this analysis, staff concluded that Garden Grove Park would be the most viable site for the development of this facility. This park site provides existing restrooms, parking, lighting, electricity, and water, and has limited proximity to residential neighborhoods. The development of a dog park at Garden Grove Park would cost approximately $73,900 for a 9,513-square-foot facility. This estimated amount includes the cost for concrete, perimeter fencing, benches, drinking fountains, signage, pet waste stations, and architectural services. The development of this facility meets the community vision by providing additional community facilities and recreational opportunities. It is recommended that city council approve Garden Grove Park as a location for the proposed dog park, authorize the mayor to sign a letter to Supervisor Nguyen conveying the details of the city's request for funding, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents related to this project.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
In the drawing, it's the one in the lower left. It looks like there's a structure there or building.
It's next to the gym. It's between the gym and the arena soccer park.
Well, that's where it would go?
So, yes, the back of the park.
It's a doghouse. You know, actually, I had a lot of people call me. This is something that I've been kind of working on for some months because... This is something that I've been kind of working on for some months because we, we don't have anything like this, and there are a lot of cities around us that do. And, you know, people always complain about the number of people that take their dogs and they go on the school grounds in the early evening or early morning and let them run and make a mess and all that. A lot of those people, hopefully, when they go to a dog run, will clean up the mess after their own pets. And so the kids going out to play in the afternoon don't step on some, you know, surprises, so to speak. But it is something, I was really surprised, the number of people that called me when I brought it up the first time, that thought it was a great idea and thought we should have someplace available for it. So I think, you know, we're at that stage now, and the funding is available, and it certainly would be a great addition to the city. And it's even nicer when it doesn't cost us anything, or if it costs us anything, it's a very small amount compared to what the overall amount is.
I have a comment or a question for staff? I know staff says that they did a lot of studies on where they could put the dog park. My main concern is, well, back, I'm going to backtrack. I am very supportive of a dog park and want to thank Supervisors Janet Nguyen for suggesting the funding for that. However, I'm uncomfortable with modifying an existing park because we have that space for that, that usage already. And now we're taking the same space, just changing the usage. I would prefer that if staff could take a little bit more time to see if we could find another location. That's my only comment I have.
Okay, any other, any other questions for staff?
No, I agree with Councilwoman Nguyen. It would be nice if we didn't have to cannibalize one of our existing parks to do this if we could create new ground. And I'd like to, I agree with her that we should take a little more time and explore a number of possibilities. I know you've worked on this already, but if you could present more options to the council, I think that'd be worth it.
I don't see any reason why they can't do both. I mean, we can ask for the money. Does it have to be tied to Garden Grove Park to ask for the money?
Has to be tied to a location.
Oh, well, I was wrong.
Janet requested that we identify a specific location.
Well, I'm going to make a motion move approval.
I think, I will, I'll wait till you get a second.
I'll second.
I'd like to postpone this to the next meeting so that staff has an opportunity to either present us with other options or tell us why there are no other options. So I'll move to continue this to our first meeting in January.
I second that.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received three yes votes with Mayor Dalton and Councilmember Jones voting no.
Okay, 10B.
Before we get off this, while you're here, Kim, somebody in the audience made reference to the Christmas tree lighting, and that was your idea, and I thought it went great.
Thank you.
And you're to be saluted for the idea and for the execution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It's a great staff effort all the way around. Took a lot of people.
They did a good job.
They did.
Compared to the lighting on Main Street that we've had in the past, you were 10,000% better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 10B.
Mr. Mayor, 10B is award of contract to more contracting for the installation of Amber Alert message boards, one on Harbor and one on Valley View. And I'd like Keith Jones to give you a staff report on this.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, plan specifications came before you about this project on February 14th, 2006, and you approved the project. Two elements to the construction are, first one is installation of two Amber Alert dynamic message signs on northbound Harbor Boulevard north of Flagstone Avenue. Second sign will be installed approximately 300 feet north of Tiffany Avenue on Valley View Street for northbound traffic. Second element of the construction is installation of fiber optic communications system from Amber Alert dynamic message signs to the Traffic Management Center inside City Hall. We received nine qualified bids for this project. On November 28th, 2007, they were opened, and the lowest qualified bidder is Moore Electric. Funds for this project will come from the Federal Highway Association, OCTA, and this will fund the entire project. There is no impact to the general fund. And the funds are tied to this specific project. They cannot be used somewhere else for this. Therefore, it is recommended that City Council award the contract to Moore Electrical Contract Incorporated and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. I'm sorry, the amount for this is $2,565,621.
How much is this, is grant money?
100%.
100%.
Between the two funds, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I will, oh, go ahead.
This is part of the Harbor widening and improvement project?
It will accentuate that. It's building on that Harbor is a main thoroughfare for traffic between several cities. In fact, OCTA recognizes that by putting the upcoming bus rapid transit going onto Harbor. So this is a key thoroughfare for the region as well as Valley View.
And if we don't spend this money, the money's going to go somewhere else. And this is federal money?
Federal and OCTA.
So the federal money could not only, would not only go somewhere else, it might go somewhere else in a different state.
Yes.
I move we approve. Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, 10C.
Mr. Mayor, 10C is award of contract to RJ Noble Company for arterial street rehabilitation project at several locations, and Keith Jones is here to give you a staff report on this item as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, you have the various locations in front of you. There's 11 street sections that will be rehabilitated. The project consists of removal and replacement of existing failed pavements and milling of existing pavement, cracked ceiling, and a fabric overlay, as well as improvements to hardscape features such as sidewalk curb and gutter in various areas. Received eight bids and opened them on November 29th, 2007, with the lowest qualified bidder being RJ Noble Company for a total bid of $5,593,058.90. Funding for this project is again included in the 2006-07 capital improvement budget and is funded by the gas tax and Measure M funding as well as federal funds. So again, there is no impact to the general fund. It is recommended that City Council award contract to RJ Noble for the amount of $5,593,058.90 and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Complete staff report. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Sir Rosen?
On Brookhurst, from Garden Grove to Lamson and then Westminster to Trask, those streets were just dug up, weren't they, for some pipes?
Yes.
I mean, I remember they were congested at the same time the work was finishing on the 22 widening, which was in, within the last year or two.
The location of Garden Grove to Lamson was impacted by our Brookhurst sewer line improvements. Those are now complete, so.
Yeah, the point is, we just tore the streets up. I know on Brookhurst and Garden Grove, and Chapman too, because I've taken Chapman. And then we patched them up, and now we're going to be tearing them up again. I mean, couldn't we have done this all at once on these streets?
No, they're two separate projects. One's paid for on Brookhurst, as I was indicating. The Brookhurst sewer line was a separate project under the sanitary district. So those are paid for by sanitary district funds, and that is actual construction underneath the street. These projects are street rehabilitation for failed pavement areas and an overlay cap that finishes the street. So what we wouldn't want to see is to overlay this street and then do installation of sewer pipe or storm drain pipe. So we followed the process the way it should be done. The sewer pipe was constructed first, and now we're coming back and doing a curb-to-curb overlay of that street.
No, that, that's not the point. The point is, as a motorist, I'm driving down Brookhurst, and it's torn up because there's a pipe being replaced. And now, a year or two later, it's all going to be torn up again. Why, and I understand you put the pipe in before you do the street, but why couldn't, when you, after you put the pipe in, why couldn't you have done the street then?
In essence, we're doing that, what you're seeing is the timing delay between getting this approved under the Orange County Transit Authority and these projects moving forward. It's only been probably really six months since that project on Brookhurst Street was completed.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Broadbent.
What's the, what's the time period this is going to be tore up in any one of these streets?
For each street section, could probably be anywhere from 60 days to 90 days.
Well, that long.
Are you tearing up the same sections of the street that were torn up for the other project?
Parts of it, yes.
And I think what everybody is hinting at is, isn't there a better way to coordinate the timing to where if you have a project that you may do now and something six months or eight months down the road, is there a way to coordinate it so the streets are only torn up once?
Ideally, yes. But again, the same people that coordinate that project for the building of that sewer pipe are not experts in pavement repair. And there's a coordination between funding from OCTA coming forward and funding and the, funding from the sanitary district to do that sewer line. So while ideally, we would want to combine those projects, logistically, that isn't always possible.
Well, I guess we should work to coordinate that so that it can happen.
Okay.
In defense of the city, I think that that's really hard to lay all that out. Besides that, this one's going to be all over town. It's not just going to be on Brookhurst Street.
Well, we're not going to tear up all these streets at the same time.
How do I finish? Please, sir, can I finish? I mean, basically, I think that we experience more people and more cars on the streets all the time. Our streets are used and tore up by cars all the time. I mean, this is something that really needs to be done. And it's certainly, it's certainly a much bigger issue, a bigger issue here than it was just putting the plumbing in on Brookhurst Street. Now granted, it's going to delay some people, and I hope it's not all done at the same time, but it's going to have problems, but it's going to be tore up. And it's just, as a motorist, we have to put up with this stuff. I mean, if you drive anywhere seven or eight miles in the county of Orange, you're going to run into some street being torn up somewhere. I think it's a great idea that we keep maintaining our streets the way we do. I mean, it is a pleasure to drive in Garden Grove compared to Santa Ana. And I don't mean anything to say anything bad about Santa Ana, but their streets are terrible. And this is, this is really the thing that we need to be doing. And we're capping the whole street this time. It's not just one little section down Brookhurst. We're going to overlay the whole street from curb to curb. This is something that really needs to be done.
Well, of course, we ought to be doing this. All I'm saying is we ought to try to coordinate so that when we work on a street, we do everything to the street at the same time.
Mr. Jones.
So our motorists aren't inconvenienced twice.
Will you promise me that you'll try and coordinate these a little bit better?
Yes.
If you can?
Yes.
Perhaps make more phone calls to somebody, ask if they anticipate doing anything in the area? Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion or?
I move we approve.
Second.
A motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Ordinance presented for second reading.
Yeah, we have a few here, so bear with me. Mr. Jim Martin's not here to do 11A. Ordinance number 2718 for second reading. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, California repealing ordinance number 2590 and ordinance number 2666 and adopting by reference to following primary codes with certain amendments, deletions, and additions thereto. California Building Code 2007 Edition, California Electrical Code 2007 Edition, California Mechanical Code 2007 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2007 Edition, California Energy Code 2007 Edition, California Fire Code 2007 Edition, and California Reference Standards Code 2007 Edition. And certain secondary codes, including Uniform Administrative Code 1997 Edition, the Uniform Housing Code 1997 Edition, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings 1997 Edition, Uniform Building Security Code 1997 Edition, and the Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Tub Code 2006 Edition.
You done?
Done.
Move we approve for adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
11B.
11B, Mr. Mayor, is ordinance number 2719 for second reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving zone change amendment number A-135-07 to change the zoning designation from R2, limited multiple residential to R3, multiple family residential.
I'll move it.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
11C.
11C, Mr. Mayor, is ordinance number 2720 for second reading. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a development agreement between Tony Nakdang and Khan Tu Vu Dang, property owners and the City of Garden Grove.
Move approval.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Are we at 12 matters?
Yes.
Okay, 12A. This is the IAPA, International Association of Amusement Parks and Attractions. Staff actually conducted quite a few meetings with individuals and representatives of companies at this convention. McWinnie is a group that has built a couple of hotels, and we've talked to them there. We went to the Downtown Disney, Daimunda Educational, toured the Gaylord Palms Resort and Convention Center, toured the Nickelodeon family sites. That's one of the ones we're talking about, a Sheraton, excuse me, not a Sheraton. We're talking about another hotel having a water park. And we wanted to see exactly what type of attraction it was, what it does for the community, what it does for the people that are staying there. And believe me, it's, it's an awful lot of noise, a lot of kids having fun, and when those kids are there, that means their parents are bringing them there. And we're very impressed with some of that. All of us had different meetings and went to, no more than two persons on any given meeting or site that was inspected. But we really found one amusement park that's being built now, and it really kind of gave you an idea to see conceptually in your mind, somebody says, here's what we're going to do on 100 acres or 75 acres or 150 acres or whatever. But it's really kind of hard to comprehend unless you really actually visual, you try to visualize it, but then when you go and see it, it's really something else. It's really amazing because you see all the parts starting to come together. And it's the same thing with International West and the same thing with Harbor. If you go from Chapman south, you see, well, actually north too, but you see all these pieces that have been coming together for so many years. We attend IAPA and we attend ICSC because we've been very successful at these venues. We've cemented some very good relationships with people that are developers, people that have done some great things in this city. And believe me, there's a lot more to be done. I'm just kind of generalizing because there may be one or other members that may want to add to it. But it's just amazing to see, and once you go, there is room for International West. And all I can probably say is that watch it for the next five to 10 years because I think you're going to be amazed as you see what happens, what brings this city together, what generates revenue. Some of the older neighborhoods are going to be revitalized. It's going to continue to be great.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment staff on packing our schedules full while we're out there with some great meetings. I mean, it's one thing just to go to the conference, but to have a full schedule of meetings with these, I mean, people who have 15, 20 years' worth of tacit knowledge of the intricate details of those kind of developments, and they're very elaborate developments, anything entertainment and amusement related. developments, anything entertainment and amusement related and hotel and so forth. So, very insightful trip, and we got to be surrounded by people who just really, really understand that realm of development. So it was very enlightening, I think, very productive for the city.
Mr. Broadwater.
Well, I didn't go to IAPA, but I did go to the Myrtle Beach to take a look at the theme park. One of the things that you gotta realize is that we meet with a lot of people, and they have all kinds of ideas, grandiose ideas, and, and you've gotta go take a look at what they're really doing. Because if you don't, you don't really know that it really exists. I mean, we've had several people, several, we've had lots of people come to us and talk to about building a hotel, they didn't have any money, and they can waste a lot of your time. Now, these gentlemen with this theme park talked to us at the Las Vegas Convention and said that they were building a theme park in Myrtle Beach, and they were spending four hundred million dollars on it. Well, four hundred million dollars is a lot of money. At least it is in my neighborhood. And I was, I wanted to see it. I mean, if they're gonna say they're building, spending four hundred million dollars, I think it's worth seeing, worth taking a look at, because they're talking about coming here and doing the same thing. I have to admit, I was tremendously impressed. They are spending it, and it is going to be one, well, I mean, I'm not a theme park person, but it is gonna be one heck of a theme park. And it'd be, I'd love to be able to go back and take a look at it when they get it finished. We were able to see different contractors all over. Take a, think about building Disneyland all at one time, that's what they were doing. And you had a pocketful of guys here and a pocketful of guys there, putting it all together. And we had a tour guide that pointed out to us how it was all going together. It's a theme park, it's called Hard Rock Park, and it's based on the Hard Rock people. And it's a musical theme park. And everything's gonna be tied together with music. And I'm not a musical guy, I got kicked out of the choir twice. But I really liked it, I was impressed. And I don't think I impressed too easily. But it's not like the casino guys were coming here without a dime in their pockets trying to put in a casino. These gentlemen were putting something together, and it was, it was fun to watch it, the couple of days we were there to watch it happen. And I hope that I get to go back at the time they had the grand opening and see what it's really like in the finished product. So maybe if I put my, save my money, I'll send, take me and my grandson back, take a look at it.
Ms. Rosen.
Well, one of, I mean, they've got all their structures up at the Hard Rock Theme Park, and one of the things they have up is this huge roller coaster, which is the Led Zeppelin roller coaster. And so we saw that, and then they, we put on earphones in a room, and they did a virtual roller coaster. And Led Zeppelin was just in the news this morning, because they did a huge concert last night in London, so it's timely. One, in the video that was shown earlier tonight, there was a fellow named Jack Wolf, who's with the McWinnie organization, and they've got the exclusive agreement to try to develop the property at Harbor and Buarro. And he was one of the designers of a lot of the Disney World area, and he took us, those of us who went to Orlando, he took us to the Boardwalk Hotel area, which is sort of what he envisions for the Buarro area, which is a number of hotels and sort of a, a water plan. And so, and he knew all about it, because he had designed it and built it for Disney. So it was instructive to hear him talking about his insights for that and how it ties into what they'd like to do in Garden Grove. And so I, I have always thought it was worthwhile to go to this convention, just so we get the name out there, you know? And you can go eight years in a row and not make a connection, but people know that if they do wanna build something near the city to go to. And that's exactly what's happened with the Hard Rock people, who are gonna build this facility in Myrtle Beach, and they're looking for a California location, and Garden Grove is where they wanna come. And so it's the visibility, and all you need is one operator to fill in the gap. So I thought it was worthwhile, and it's always worthwhile for the council members to see for themselves what it's like.
Ms. Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. I was debating whether I wanted to go on this trip, but I'm glad that I did. It gave me a better understanding of what staff want to present and a more realistic view of the presentation of the things that staff want to promote to the City Council. And the one project that really impressed me was the Gaylord Resort and Convention Center. It had a huge hotel connected with a convention center, and I think that that would bring a lot of revenue to the city if someone would put in to do that within the city. And I wanted to also thank staff for coordinating a very nice schedule, and we had something to do every day, and it was a learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, twelve B. So appointment of Commissioner to fill a vacancy on the Planning Commission for Roland Chi. I'd like to nominate Harry Krebs to fill that position. He has experience, he's, he's been on the Planning Commission, been chairman of the Planning Commission in the past, been on numerous other commissions, and is probably the most committed person as far as things for the City of Garden Grove, whether it's a community foundation or anything else, he's, he's highly involved in that, and he really, really does tout this city. And I'd like to see him on the Planning Commission, so I'm nominating him.
I'd like to say a few words. I'd like to hold off on this to January the eighth, I mean, that would be my preference. I think that we're just finding out, the public's just finding out that Roland quit now. I think a lot more people would like to at least apply for the job, and who knows? I mean, Harry's been on the thing, I'm not trying to take anything away from Harry, but I'd like to see us wait at least one month and, and get to see what type of, of other people are applying, would apply for the commission.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, I'll second that.
Second him or him?
I didn't make a motion, but if he gets a second to his motion, I'll make a substitute.
That a substitute?
I don't know if there's a second for Mr. Krebs.
I, um, actually, I agree with the mayor about Harry Kreb, but I also agree with Mr. Broadwater to give people a chance to put in the application.
Are you seconding Bill's message?
I'm seconding Bill's motion, the reason, I have, statement, reason.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we hold off to January the eighth.
Well, I will second that.
A substitute.
It's not a substitute, it's a motion to postpone, which is not a substitute motion.
So then we can vote on mine first?
Thank you. No, a motion to postpone or continue takes priority over the main motion.
Mr. Nixon, what do you think?
I think the motion to continue basically takes priority.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Mayor Dalton voting no.
Twelve C. Mr. Rosen, this is yours.
This is, we discussed this, we had somebody from the Transportation Corridor Agencies at our meeting, at our last meeting, and this is the resolution to support the expansion of the Foothill Transportation Corridor South. The, it's the SR two forty-one toll road, and I'm not gonna repeat everything that I said the last time, but basically, this is a, a proposed toll road for South County that's been in the works for, I think, over ten years, and it's almost at the end, but it has to go through the Coastal Commission, and there's some controversy at the very last minute. And the effect it has on Garden Grove is twofold. Number one, if the, it's part of the network, county network of roads, and if it's not built, then the congestion is gonna back up to our part of the county. And secondly, if it's not built as a toll road, and as a toll road, it basically funds itself, they can issue bonds, and the bonds pay for the construction of the road so that it's not OCTA money, it's not state money, it's essentially private money that is used to build it. If that doesn't happen, and the alternative is to widen the five freeway, that will be done with public money, OCTA money, federal money, state money, and that's money that's not available to Garden Grove. And we know from history that after the first measure M passed in nineteen ninety, it took them fifteen years to get to the twenty-two freeway. We always get put last. And, and we don't wanna have things in the way of Garden Grove getting its fair share of the money for the new measure M or for the other funding. So for all those reasons, it's to our advantage to approve this resolution. So that's, I'm, I'm moving the resolution.
Move, we adopt the resolution.
Okay, yours is a motion, yours is a second?
I, I just have a little comment on that. I agree with Mr. Rosen. I wanted for the public to know that I did some research on the environmental impact and review Senator Tom Harmon's report regarding his view on the environmental impact. And it's minimal compared to the benefits to the public, and I'm supporting the resolution.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Twelve D, appointment of a council member to fill a two-year term on the Garden Grove Community Foundation Board. I'd like to nominate Steve Jones.
I'd like to second that.
I'd be honored.
Yeah, motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
May I just say, I have the other seat, we have two seats on, two council seats on the board. If any of you would like my seat, I'd be happy to give it to you. Interested?
You know, I think that you really need to get the full depth of that.
How about you?
I've seen your seat before, and keep it where it is. Okay. Mr. Broadwater.
Uh, I would like to comment on what Mr. Frank Hoffman, or Francis Hoffman, I'm not sure what his name is, made about the two hundred thousand dollars tonight. I would have no intention of ever voting for two hundred thousand dollars for relocation on that situation, and I just, I mean, he comes up here and, yeah, and I think Mr. Rosen's right, I think Matthew Fratell has done a much better job than George Bush this year. And I don't know, I certainly don't know that he deserves, I don't know that he's making more money than President of the United States, I'm very dubious of that. However, I, I think it was a, if, if everybody in, in the audience knew what Francis Hoffman was talking about, you, you would be surprised at, that would be throwing money away. And I certainly am not ready to do that. Maybe ten percent of two hundred thousand dollars if we were, if we were to pursue the property, and we're not even pursuing it. So, it just, twenty thousand would be a gift. And I'm just, I was just, I, I just think it's terrible for people to come up here and berate people. And I just, you know, there's no comparison between Matt Fratell and George and the President of the United States. Another thing that was said tonight is, one of the touring companies didn't get their way, the word conspiracy was used, there was absolutely no conspiracy, it was about as wide open as you could get. And so I think that was a rotten thing to say also. So, anyway, I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas, I'm going to. I'm looking forward to my granddaughter and grandson at Christmas time, there's nothing better. And have a happy New Year and a prosperous New Year. I hope, I hope we see some prosperity in our country this next year, I hope we take a few of those dollars that we're spending overseas and spend it at home. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Rosen.
Well, I, when I left the dais during the tow truck discussion and went in the other room, I was reminded that the source of my quote was, goes back to the nineteen twenties when Calvin Coolidge was president, and somebody complained that Babe Ruth had a better, got paid more than the President of the United States, and it was Babe Ruth who said, I had a better year. So, and they also confirmed that the President makes more than you do, Matt. So, that can be your target for next year. But I wanna just comment briefly about Ruth Smith, our outgoing city clerk. Ruth was always a delight to work with, she always had a smile on her face. And in, in my professional career, I've worked with a lot of city clerks, and one of the things about Ruth is, you know, she ran the election process, runs the election process, and she was always honest, didn't play favorites in the elections, and I never heard any candidates complaining about Garden Grove's elections, that they, that she was biased or treated anybody special. And that's probably the most important aspect of that job, is that the city clerk run it honestly and treat everybody equally, and she did a wonderful job at that. And I'm gonna miss her. She was always great with kids, and, you know, when I first got on the council, I had young kids, and she was wonderful with them as well, and they're gonna miss her. So, anyway, I wanna, by, by the time this council meets next, the Iowa caucuses will have taken place, I think the New Hampshire primary takes place the same night as our next meeting, so we'll be on our way to picking a new president. I wanna wish everybody a Happy Holiday and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn.
First, I wanna congratulate Ruth for her retirement, and my first year was very pleasant, thanks to Ruth leading me in some of the paperwork. And I have a message for Bob Owens, he always come up here and talk about housing and how it has skyrocketed, and a lot of people will be in trouble. Well, there's talk at, in the Capitol to have a law that would help homeowners with the rates, but there are controversies. Some people think that people who make bad decisions shouldn't be helped by the government, but then other people believe that, with the new law, maybe we will get our real estate industry out of a lot of problems. And, and I have, Verna, I got your pictures, and I will be looking into it, thank you, Verna. And I want to congratulate our planning, our former planning commissioner, Roland Chi, on his marriage. And I wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and Happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Just a quick Happy Birthday to Sandy Dalton. And congratulations to Ruth on her retirement, we're all really, really gonna miss her a lot. And just Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you. There's not really much left to say about Ruth, but we do know where she lives, and we do know her phone number, and I'm sure that from time to time, we will be calling her. And she imparted all of her knowledge onto Kathy, so I know you're gonna do a great job, and Ruth was very pleased that you were selected to take her job over. So good luck to you, and, and thanks to Ruth Smith for everything she's done. The tree lighting was a great success. We had the Gardettes there, we had the Boys and Girls Club, the Colony of Performing Arts, the Garden Grove High School Vocal Ensemble. It was really great. And the tree was beautiful, although I think one councilman voted against the tree, I'm not sure. In any event, it was, it was, it was really something, there were over a thousand people there, and it was great. And it's a far cry from what's happened in the past, but that's part of what we're trying to do, is bring back the family to Garden Grove. And that's just the start of the things, Mr. Broadwater? That's just the start of things that, that are to come. Congratulations to Roland Chi on his upcoming marriage, and we wish him the best of luck and thank him for his service on the Planning Commission. I wanna wish my wife Sandy a Happy Birthday. And then I want to close the meeting, actually, there are several people that have died within the last couple of weeks or so. This morning, Ken Westland in Grass Valley, Ken and his wife Pat had lived in Garden Grove for, geez, I think about forty-five, over forty-five years, very active in the community, and it's a great loss. Terry Bain, who is the husband of Kim Bain, who is one of our retired police officers, passed away recently unexpectedly too. Paul Ellis, who lived in Garden Grove, I think, about fifty-five years, he was one of the kings of the strawberry ball and involved in everything, just a wonderful person. Jack Caulfield, who was a volunteer for the Police Department and one of the people that started the CERT team, was highly involved in this city, loved this city, and really did a lot for it. Fred Savrin, Fred didn't live in Garden Grove, but his wife Lynn was a school teacher here for, I'm not sure how many years, maybe twenty-five or thirty years. She taught school in the Garden Grove School District, and, and it was a terrible loss too. So we'll adjourn now till January eighth. So we'll adjourn now till January 8th.